Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commander Castillo, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item B, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Manager in waiting, right? No changes to the... Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as posted and allow Chair to deviate as necessary.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item C, call to the public. We have Mike Colvin. Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Mike Colvin. I'm representing Motorola Solutions on behalf of the county, the IT Department, and the Sheriff's Office. I know there's a few items on the agenda for approval for Motorola Solutions. Just as a little background, Motorola Solutions, my part of Motorola Solutions just handles public safety, meaning pretty much everything the government does with communication systems, from the minute a 911 call is made to case closure in prison, we're involved with. And that include the CAD and record system, that includes the radio system, everything that the officer might use in the field, including body worn cameras, everything else, basically everything that command can control. So, and I do better on a Q and A system, so if you have any questions, please ask. We are providing information to the Sheriff's Office and the county on basically a 10-year plan for what communications are going to look like, you know, over the next decade. Obviously, some things come up, needs come up down the road, but a total refresh of the radio system, and refresh of the dispatch communication system, and an integration of all of those other features in the future. So, right now, we kind of have disparate parts of Motorola that don't necessarily work together. We will have a system, when this is done, that will actually work together. So, the radio system, the CAD system, the 911 system will all be working together. So, we are working on that. We're hoping to have that within the next 30 days to the Sheriff's Office. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer any. I know there's been some questions about communications.
So, the call to the public, we're not allowed to ask you questions?
Okay.
But we appreciate the update. This has been a topic that a lot of our constituents have been concerned about, so...
Wonderful.
Thanks for coming in this morning, and thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the board? Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? You don't see anybody?
There's one question.
Okay. Who is that?
We can answer this. We are asking a question about the tax...
Is it a question, or is it a state? They'd like to statement?
It's a question.
It's a question.
Okay. Can't answer a question. Okay. And we will move on to current events. Supervisor Malara, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Okay. Supervisor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to send our condolences to Manfred Kreip. His wife passed away over the weekend. She was my kid's third grade teacher back when she was there at Mitchell. You know, they were such a loving couple, and I know, I talked to Mr. Kreip yesterday, and, you know, it's sad when you lose a companion of so many years of marriage being together. So, if you see them, you know, keep the family, your thoughts and prayers. I also had the opportunity to speak at the 100th anniversary of the post office, which, when it was created in 1923, it was the post office and immigration center. The bottom part of the building was used for the post office, and on top was government buildings. It was very nice. The postmaster is a graduate of Nogales High School, Ms. Crystal Flores. They also honored the young lady Ronquillo, who had the winning picture for the, of the stamp that was, is being used to being canceled. So, they had that available for people that would buy that. And other than that, everything is going pretty good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I had the opportunity to attend the IBWC regional meeting that was held in Toubac. It was a first in person meeting for IBWC, for this region. In a while, we talked about mostly the, we talked with NAB Bank about the different collection retention bases in Nogales and Nora, and the different projects that they're doing with the sewer treatment facilities and the pump stations in Mexico. That was an interesting meeting. I'm receiving calls on the economic development quarter in I-19 about postings and people who have questions, so I'm glad they're doing a study session this afternoon, and we're going to have another meeting with the, the board here, not the Board of Supervisors, but the, which board is it?
Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Jesus. And that's going to be on Thursday. Also, receiving some calls on the Cross Creek Connector from the East County, the fact that it's an open road, there's concerns about that, so we're asking legal to look at that. Working with ADOT on the money that was in the state budget from Gail Griffin and the other Democrats who represent this region for SR-83, and also the special allocation for Ruby Road, Rio Rico Drive interchanges. The progress at the all-weather crossing in San Ysid Creek is incredible on Pendleton Drive. They have halfway constructed, and it's been a great project. I know ADOT's running it, but I know that the county has been working hard on that. So, Jesus, thank you very much. Leonard, thank you very much for all the work that you guys have put into that. The, we're tracking the funding for the Great Separated Crossing at Ruby Road at Petro There's different pools of money that have been coming in for that. Last year, the state legislature allocated $3 million for that. There's some money from Senator Kelly and his congressional directed spending. There's some other pockets of money that we're trying to pull together for that, try to get that project done at minimal cost, local cost, to our taxpayers. And finally, the Border Counties Coalition, working with Pima County on the transportation of the migrants out of Santa Cruz County into Casa Lisa's program, and then up to Phoenix into their final destinations, so that we don't have people lingering in our community, makes our community safer. So, those are the things that we've been working on. Jesus, do you have any report?
Mr. Chairman, I have two items to report. The first one is, I attended the manager's meeting in Toubac. It was held in Toubac, so we hosted. One of the items that was brought up that is of interest to the county is that CSA is working on tools to help us with our expenditure limits. It seems like more than one or two counties are having trouble with that. So, you know, they're on top of it, and I just want to communicate that, that we'll keep on top of and see how we could use some of those tools. Second item is I attended a meeting with the Council General, Mexican Council General, in his office, and it was, they have, they're working on a plan, some excess land that's owned by a private citizen in Mexico, and they want to do retention detention basin. The design hasn't been completed, but, you know, we fully support something like that. Anything that they do in Mexico has a very significant impact on our flooding situation, so we offered technical assistance and anywhere we could support. So, I just wanted to let you guys know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item E, department reports and activities, finance, cash, investment, and revenue. Ariseo, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
Cash and investment report. The general fund has an overall balance of $20,849,435, with an investment amount of The road fund has an overall balance of $1,294,325, with an investment amount of $7,233. The flood control district has an overall balance of $1,203,000, $203,3,600, with an investment amount of $274,070. The jail district has an overall balance of $3,073,090, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $50,125,728, with an investment amount of $17,945,281, for an estimated end of the month balance of $16,640,483.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we will go to item two, workforce development update.
Good morning, Chairman Racker and members of the board.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
I'm pleased to report that there has been a significant surge in office traffic in recent weeks, with an average of 229 clients per week compared to previous monthly averages of 160. We anticipate a further increase in these numbers over the next few weeks as produce season comes to a close at the end of this month. I'm also delighted to announce that after a year of dedicated efforts, our Santa Cruz County one-stop website has undergone substantial updates and will be officially launched this Thursday. Our collaboration with the Santa Cruz County IT has been instrumental in ensuring that provision of accurate information and the introduction of online intake forms following the website's deployment. Our staff will be receiving training to maintain the site's currency by keeping it up to date with relevant information and events. The in-school youth program currently in progress is scheduled to conclude at the end of June. Our staff is actively engaging with graduating students who offer short-term training opportunities to those interested in pursuing fast-paced careers. In response to ongoing audits, we are also implementing changes to our youth program with a renewed focus on targeting out-of-school youth who have completed their education, dropped out, or are currently not enrolled in post-secondary education. The services offered to this group include case management, career counseling and exploration, education and training programs, supportive services such as transportation, childcare and housing assistance, work-based learning opportunities, internships, apprenticeships, summer employment programs, job search assistance, financial assistance for education and training costs, support for special populations, including individuals with disabilities, ex-offenders, homeless youth, pregnant or parenting youth, and high school dropouts. Another of our focuses to strengthen, is to strengthen our business services. We have recently welcomed a new team member dedicated to this area, which will help in strengthening our community engagement with local businesses. Services are to include employer outreach and relationship building, assisting employers in job postings and recruitment efforts, providing labor market information and industry trends to employers, development, developing customized training programs and workforce development solutions, offering businesses consulting and support on talent acquisition and retention strategies, facilitating partnerships between employers and educational institutions, organizing on-the-job fairs, on-the-job site fairs and recruitment events, and delivering training sessions and workshops for employers. I'm also excited to announce that our seventh annual job fair and community expo has been scheduled for October 11th at the Nogales High School Gymnasium. This event marks a significant milestone as we resume its operations following its cancellation due to COVID-19. The last one we had was in 2019. We have observed steady rise in local businesses reaching out to us with job vacancies. These postings are actively displayed in our office, as well as promoted through our social media channels in the AGC State Database. We anticipate a further increase in job postings once our business services rep is completely trained. Over the last three months, we've posted about 64 job, local jobs using Arizona at work with 36 confirmed hires. I'm also delighted to inform you that the Santa Cruz County Workforce Development has successfully undergone local workforce development board recertification. This process mandated under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act evaluates local workforce development boards for compliance with WIWA regulations, primarily triggered by challenging, by changes in state leadership. The evaluation encompasses board composition, governance, strategic planning, collaboration with partners, and performance accountability. As of June 1st, our board has received approval for recertification by the State Workforce Arizona Council, ensuring effective oversight of local workforce development aligned with the needs of employers, job seekers in the community. Additionally, we are actively engaged in updating our current memorandum of understanding and intergovernmental funding agreement with our local partners, which we anticipate completing within the next month. We remain committed to attending various partner meetings and collaborating at local and state levels in order to identify and address specific needs, skills sought by employers, with the ultimate vision of strengthening our local workforce. Thank you for your continued support as we strive towards our shared goals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You were just telling me that you were hosting a job fair. You want to say a little bit about what's going on?
Yes, so we have a current job fair today, from 9 to 3 o'clock, from Wholesome Harvest. They are planning on hiring about 36 people, so it's currently happening in our office right now.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Actually, I'd like to move into regular agenda. We're going to jump around a little bit.
Skip on the jail district.
I'm going to skip the jail district, and then we'll come back to, we're going to take care of these first two items. I'd like to take care of item 20, 21, and 22. All right. So, item 21, discussion of possible action to approve services agreement with the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $50,000, with up to four one-year renewal items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that item, and because I had asked Olivia for a copy of the budget, and she couldn't get it to me before our meeting, if possible.
We can still get the copy of the budget at any time. And it starts on July 1st, so I'm sure we'll have that. I'd still like to move to approve.
Well...
Okay.
We need a second.
So, I'll second it. So, now we can have our discussion.
Discussion. And I think, I don't know if Olivia, she's on the Zoom call? You want to talk? You want to call on Olivia?
Ms. Kramer?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have your budget ready to?
And I apologize, Mr. Chairman, for not submitting that, but I am out of town, and I'm not coming back until next Monday, so that's the reason why I sent an email to Ms. Jennifer to go ahead and let her know, let her know that. I was not able to get her that information right away. And also, our accountant is out of town, so that's the reason why we didn't submit it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with having a special meeting to discuss it after reviewing the budget. It's only fair.
Okay. So, is there any other discussion?
Nope.
So, Ms. Kramer, you need to get that to us as soon as possible.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
And next Monday is really not acceptable, so we need to have that this week, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't get an acknowledgement that you'll get that to us this week.
She's on vacation.
Is someone going to get it to us this week?
Well, our bookkeeper is also on vacation. That's the reason why we couldn't submit it this week. I was aware yesterday with an email that Ms., that Jennifer sent it to us, so I tried to get ahold of the bookkeeper, but unfortunately, both of us, we are on vacation.
Okay. All right. So, there's a motion in a second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
May.
Okay. Motion carries 2-1.
Wow.
Item 22, discussion of possible action to approve professional services agreement with the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $50,000, with up to one four-year, it's up to four one-year renewal terms.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the Port Authority for their due diligence, hard work, their, you know, this is a, what I personally consider a true investment. They bring back millions and millions of dollars to our community over the years, and I personally appreciate all that's been done through all of the past presidents, including our current chairman. Thank you for all you do.
Okay. And I'd like to thank legal for working through both of these items to make sure that we are straight up with gift clauses and making sure that the county is checking all the boxes that we're receiving our return on investment. So, we have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Yeah. Hold on. Can I see your budget before we vote on it? I'm just kidding. But just...
They're, they're relevant. We've witnessed it.
Yeah. And I've witnessed it, that the other two, but, but I do want to thank you guys. I know that it's a team effort, and I know that you guys are there, but we're always there to support, and so is the community, and it's not a one-man team. It's, we all work together for the, for the outcome, which is, how do we better our community? And since its inception, when we started it back when, when God rest to Sol Nacho and Mr. Harlan Capey, and everybody came to, to the table to do that, the whole idea was, was to do that and, and more, but I do, you know, want to give you guys a shout out too, so. Now, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we'd like to move back into item G, the jail district.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move with, we recess our regular meeting and convene into the jail district.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item one, discussion of possible action to authorize to fill two detention officer positions?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion of possible action to approve second extension of professional services agreement with Advanced Correctional Healthcare, Correctional Healthcare, Inc., for jail medical services at an estimated price of $699,198.32.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Commander, for getting that put in place, and also for the Health Department and your work in getting that put into place.
Absolutely.
And we always have to thank legal, because nothing happens without them.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our jail district and convene regular session.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are back in regular session. Item one, discussion of possible action for authorization to fill vacancies, A, recorder position, B, legal assistant position, C, victim compensation coordinator position.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. These are all budgeted items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they are.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion of possible action to approve reapportments of Justice of the Peace Pro Tempore from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, of A, Concepcion Fragamonte, and B, DJ Astrum.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank both of these people for being, their willingness to serve in this role. It is not an easy role, but lending their expertise to our community, we are grateful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion of possible action to approve Second Amendment to Professional Services Agreement number KR-21-0029, with Constructing Circles of Peace, Inc., from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion of possible action to approve Resolution 2023-05 for the Family Counseling Program for Fiscal Year 2024, matching funds in the amount of $2,037.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion of possible action to approve Memorandum of Understanding Contract Number 2023-094 with the Arizona Department of Public Safety regarding ARS-41-1724 for gang, drug, and immigration enforcement efforts in the amount of $250,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion of possible action to approve authorization to, to approve and authorize Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office to sign Memorandum of Understanding GEO-SPEEDL, GIS Support Services for Next Generation 911 with the Arizona Department of Administration from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Sheriff, you've been very busy. Discussion of possible action to approve contracts with Motorola Solutions for project management services for A, Quote Number 2079523 for Dell server mitigation in the amount of $57,283.83, B, Quote Number 2067047 for AZDPS FoxTalk compatibility, State Link 2.0 license and installation in the amount of $7,500, and C, Quote Number 2107360 for Hewlett-Packard Enterprise HPE server maintenance in the amount of $3,620.38.
Move to approve. Items A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Just under discussion. I know that we've had several instances of call to the public on the radio and, and the safety of the officers, and hopefully, this is going forward to at least address some of those problems. I know that I've asked the sheriff to come and, and present to us, and I've yet to see the sheriff come, but I know you're, you're here, deputy commander, but I think it's important that any 911 system we have is there for the safety of the community, as well as the officers, so that people can respond in a timely manner. I know that one of the gentlemen that spoke last time said there were shots down in the canyon, and the deputy wanted to go down there by himself. We don't want to put people in harm's way. We want to make sure that if there's something like that, they can call for backup, so. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Manny, I'm not the tech guy, but most of this doesn't have to do with that, and it's just...
But, but it's, it's something that's starting to go into, because as the Motorola guy was saying, he's got the radio, but this also helps him do their reports, so I guess you have to learn to crawl before you walk.
Kind of.
And though it's not tied into it, we can't left our foot off the pedal and, and let the communication system be left behind. And so, the point that I'm trying to make is that all these things work together, but we can't leave one out, and we need to continue to move forward to have that communications, because he was saying, there's parts that aren't working with each other with the radio, and correct me if I'm wrong.
You're absolutely right.
So, so some of the things that were mentioned under call to the public, which we couldn't discuss, I mean, so at the end of the day, look, Bill, we want to make sure that you don't have to make a call to somebody's wife or husband and say, you know, your, your loved one was, you know, something happened because they couldn't get ahold of anyone to come and back them up. So, that's the only thing, so, I mean, we move forward, you know, potato, potato, whatever you want to do. At the end of the day, we need to fix those items. Period. End of...
Let's go.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, discussion of possible action to approve 911 program grant agreement number ADOA-AZ911-24-15 with the Arizona Department of Administration, ADOA, in the amount of, amount up to $176,674.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, discussion of possible action to approve maintenance agreement with Souls Creek Engineering for document recording services from September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026, for a monthly amount of $2,110.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, discussion of possible action to approve intergovernmental agreements with the Arizona Department of Health Services for Contract Number CTR-060280, Amendment for Immunization Services to Help Fund COVID-19 Vaccinations, Vaccine Equity Previously Approved on December 6, 2022, and B, Contract Number CTR-064805 for Workforce Development Grant in the amount of $456,893. thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Both A and B.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, discussion of possible action to approve Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSPRS Pension Policy in accordance with the Arizona Provide Statutes thirty-eight dash eight six three point oh one.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comment from Jesus or Maricio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an annual requirement from state statutes that we need to display for public view, the, a public funding policy on our unfunded liability. Every year, it changes, as you know, as you recall, last year, we went up for bonding, and we were able to pay down that unfunded liability, which reflects now in the, in the new amount. So our new funded ratio for the PSPRS portion is at ninety percent right now, which last year was at forty-seven percent. So it's a substantial savings to the community and to, and to, to our residents of going up for bonds and paying down that liability.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chavez. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twelve, discussion of possible action to approve the transfer of monies from general fund to cover negative cash balances at June thirtieth, 2023, and authorize administrative services director to transfer any additional monies needed to cover negative cash at year end.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second under discussion. Maricio, you're back on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an annual request. Every year, when it's June thirtieth, our fiscal year comes to a close, we cannot close any of the funds with a negative cash balance, so we have to close them up, so we are asking for authority from, from the board, so I, I'm able to move those funds and have them whole again, and then the following day, which in this case, it's going to be the following Monday on July third, we revert back and go back to the negative cash balances that are, typically, they're all, the majority are grant funded.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, discussion of possible action to approve professional services contract with Dr. Randall Alexander for pediatric forensic and expert witness services related to prosecuting an existing case.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen, discussion of possible action to approve professional services contract with RJ Lee Group for Inc. for forensic testing and expert witnesses services at a rate of three hundred and fifty dollars per sample, one hundred and seventy-five dollars per control, and twenty-four hundred dollars per day of testimony.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
It's expensive, these trials, huh? But we're prepared.
Item fifteen, discussion of possible action to approve professional services contract with WD Forensic, Inc. for Shooting Reconstruction and Related Services and CR dash twenty-three dash oh two six.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action to approve professional services contract with Snyder Burnett, Eniger LLP for Legal Service, Legal Advice and Direction Regarding Requirements for California-Based Employees in an Amount Not to Exceed Fifty Thousand Dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen, discussion of possible action to approve Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement Number twenty dash zero 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 eight zero four seven dash I for Change Order Number Two with the Arizona Department of Transportation for Penleton Drive Dip at Sonoyta Creek Project for an additional three thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Move to approve.
And, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eighteen, discussion of possible action to approve a request by the Anza Trail Coalition of Arizona to place a waste container in their maintenance yard to dispose of waste from the Anza Trail.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jesus?
Mr. Chair, it was a, so the Anza Trail and, I'm sorry, help me out, is it the, I think it's the museum people, I can't remember, but they share a yard, and they do some cleanup, and there's, you know, debris that's left behind, so they're requesting the board to authorize a, a waste container, a forty-yard, forty-yarder.
Great. I think it's terrific that we're sponsoring, we're helping these organizations that are out there doing the work to clean up our community, helping them do that stuff, so thank you very much for organizing that. Is there any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nineteen, discussion of possible action to approve a request by SAC Construction LLC to use counties' land, parcel number one oh five dash twenty dash two four zero zero to store materials for the Nogales Trunk Line and IOI Restoration Processes, excuse me, Trunk Line and IOI Rehabilitation Phases Four and Five.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank IBWC for their continued effort to, to slip line this entire corridor from the border down to the wastewater treatment facility. It was pretty disruptive what they did in the beginning, in the spring downtown, but they got out of there really quickly, so I'd like to thank them for doing that, and I know they're out there putting concrete and patching up all the holes that they're making, that they had made, but this is really a twenty-six million dollar investment in our community, and it protects our groundwater and a lot of other things, so thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty, discussion of possible action to ratify the acceptance letter sent to USDA Forest Service as a participating agency in the Hermosa project.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jesus, you want to talk about that for a second?
Mr. Chair, so the Forest Service, and their, the Forest Service reached out to the county, sent a letter to the supervisors requesting that we be a participating community in the Fast Forty-One program that South Thirty-Two was accepted into, and we sent out a letter the date that it was due, and we're just ratifying.
And that was the federal program, the Fast Tracks Critical Minerals?
It's a federal program that, that, for lack of knowledge of the program itself, but what it does, it dedicates the people who are accepted, or agents, businesses who are accepted into that Fast Forty-One program, they'll have a dedicated reviewers that include all the federal agencies. That way, they don't, they're all, they're all reviewing at the same time, and it doesn't expedite the reviews or, or the permit, but they do dedicate the resources to, to, to address the permits.
Okay, thank you very much. So is there any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-three, discussion of possible action to award bid number B dash oh nine. Okay, so we're gonna, on item twenty-three, I'd like to take that to study session and consultation with the legal department, the executive session, excuse me. Item twenty-four, discussion of possible action to approve bonds for duplicate warrants, A through C.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-five, discussion of possible action to approve certificates of removal and abatement of taxes and/or penalty, A through X.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-six, tax valuation adjustments, A and B.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-seven, monthly reports.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public, all monthly reports are submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thanks for getting all that stuff in. I'd like to thank all the departments for getting their work in on time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-eight, approval of minutes from six, six twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-nine, demands supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twelve cents, of which five hundred and sixteen thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents are from the general fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Maricio, you can do your job again, and we're going to go into our executive session, and then we're going to come back and deal with the last item.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we recess our regular session and convene a two executive session, and this would be for legal advice?
For legal advice on?
Item twenty.
On item twenty-three, and they also had two other items on here that they wanted to talk to us about.
Great.
Do I need to read those?
You can.
Well, if I don't, if can, it is have to.
So well, since I'm, I'll go ahead and read them. One is pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three A three, discussion consultation for legal advice regarding permit and regulation enforcement under ARS thirty-six dash oh one one oh two one thirty-six at all, and that's for health services. Item two is pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-three oh three A three, discussion consultation for legal advice regarding case law on gifts, and the other one was for the